Hi, I'm Rebecca White, reporter from the Spokesman Review and I'm here with County Commissioner Al French. And we're going to be talking about, you know, CARES funding, the budget, other county issues. And then maybe I'll just also give Al French a chance to introduce himself and say anything he wants to say before we get started.
Well, thank you Rebecca and thanks for the opportunity of sharing this time with you and also the viewers. As you indicated, I'm Al French. I'm a current Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm in my 10th year as a Commissioner, elected in 2010 and started serving in 2011. Prior to that, I was a City Council member representing the northeast part of Spokane on Spokane City Council for eight years. And a resident in the area since 1972.
Okay, I did not realize it had been 10 years as a county commissioner. But yeah, probably, you know, the first topic that I think we're probably going to get started is things that are related to, you know, the coronavirus and CARES funding. A lot of the emails that I get in response to most of my stories in some way relate to those two topics. And so one thing I just wanted to get started with was, you know, Spokane County received 90 million in federal COVID-19 aid money CARES funding. And I believe the county commissioners have now spent around 30 million of that on various projects. And so just before I, you know, start on any detailed sort of questions about that, can you maybe explain a little bit about some of the projects that have had money spent on them? And some of the projects that are still, still need to be done?
Sure. So when the federal government identified how they were going to allocate the original assistance funding, they identified that communities of over 500,000 population would receive a direct allocation. And of course Spokane County is at last count setting at around 510, 515,000 population. So we qualify as well as Kingston, Homage, Pierce, and I believe also Vancouver or Clark County. So the feds distributed to the county actually 91.2 million in CARES funding. And our goal is to use that to address regional issues, not only from the standpoint of concerns with regard to the Health District and, and the county, a lot of people don't realize that the county has been the only local government that provides funding assistance to the Health District. And that's been that way since 1999. But then we also participated in a number of things to help our small businesses survive. You know, the backbone of our local economy is our small businesses. And so we did just recently approve a $10.1 million Small Business Grant Program. And that's being administered through Greater Spokane Incorporated. And that's for businesses that are employees of 49 or less. And, and there's some other parameters to that grant program. This is an outright grant. It's not a loan. It's a grant to help our small businesses basically keep the doors open and keep going until we get out of this pandemic situation. And so we know that it's not going to make them whole, but we are doing what we can to keep the doors open. And so for those businesses in the community that would like to, you know, take advantage of that program, I would encourage you to go to the website grantinfo@spokane or greater Spokane, or let me repeat that, grantinfo@greatestpocan.org. And all the information, the application is available there. That grant money is for both for-profit and nonprofits. So I know that we have an awful lot of nonprofits in the community that are providing services as we get through this pandemic. And they are also being challenged with either donations that aren't coming in as rapidly as they typically do, or they rely on events during the spring and summer months to raise funds. And with the edicts from the governor with regard to not engaging in those outdoor activities, a lot of those fundraising activities have not been able to take place. And so the nonprofits have been impacted. We've tried to provide grant money for them too as well. So that, that in a big picture is what we tried to focus our funds on, health, general health of the community, and general health for our businesses.
And so one of the, I, one of the questions that I've gotten a couple of times and I wanted to bring up is what's the process that the county, what is the process that county commissioners go through when making CARES funding decisions? And if the public wants to get input on that process out or sort of kind of pitch themselves in their organization or just have an input on how that money is spent, how can they do that?
Well, we did do a online kind of survey or wasn't really a survey. It was more of a public input outreach effort. And we encouraged people in the community, whether you were individuals or a part of an organization or a business, to give us your thoughts, give us your ideas about how you wanted to see those CARES fundings dispersed. Keep in mind that the CARES funding is just one of many sources of funding that's coming to the community. So we have what's called Community Development Block Grant Funds that come from the Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development at federal level. We also have FEMA funds that come to the area. And we're also getting funds from other various agencies to help different parts of the economy. So the challenge for the board is trying to make sure that you align the funds with the needs so that you can maximize out the dollars available to the community. And so one of those requests early on was to provide funding for mortgage relief and renters assistance. And we did that through the Community Development Block Grant Funding. That was an ideal match for those kinds of funds. Then we also used FEMA money for some of the initial response. And then Department of Commerce money to deal with homelessness. And so the goal for the board is to try and maximize the value of the funds coming to the community and make sure that we're deploying those resources to where they'll generate the greatest bang for the buck for taxpayers and stuff. So it's kind of an orchestration of all those different sources and all of those different needs and trying to make sure you match them up.
And so that, that survey that you mentioned, I, it, the results are out and it doesn't, it's not up for people to fill out anymore. How, I guess there's not really, the county commissioners don't really do public comment, like general public comment. How do people sort of connect and let their thoughts on how that money should be spent be known?
Send us the email. The best way is to send us an email. We are still, you know, taking input. We still read the emails on a regular basis. So, you know, if you got a good idea or got a suggestion, reach out through that. If it's business related, encourage you to get ahold of, you know, either Alicia Benson or Kara Coons over at, or Cindy Wendell over at Greater Spokane Incorporated. They're orchestrating a lot of those business outreach efforts on behalf of the county. And I'll give you a great example. We spent about $2 million on PPPs or PPEs, personal protective equipment that we distributed to our small businesses. And we don't have the network to be able to do that distribution. So we, we worked with Greater Spokane Incorporated and they did the distribution out at the fairgrounds and stuff. And again, it's one of those elements that we can do and using the purchasing power of the county to help leverage dollars to the benefit of our small businesses and stuff. So we were able to, for instance, buy face masks for 43 cents on the dollar or 43 cents a piece. While at the retail, they're running closer to a dollar. And so, so that's a benefit that we can provide for our small businesses to help them keep the doors open.
And so this doesn't relate to COVID, but we just, we've gotten a couple reader questions sent in about this. And I should probably just ask it now before anyone come in. But there are some neighbors that live around the Euclid Road Bridge area, which I believe I wrote about that earlier this year, that that had been down for a while. And so some of those neighbors were looking for an update on that project and maybe a date on the replacement of that, if you're aware.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is one of those challenging projects because the bridge is actually owned by Burlington Northern. And so the bridge has become non-serviceable structurally. It was deficient. And so we had to close the bridge and that diverted a lot of traffic that previously used that Euclid access to that neighborhood, diverted it around the, the bridge and down other roads, Kirkton, for instance, that weren't really designed to handle the traffic. So the county did spend several hundred thousand dollars, in fact, I think we're getting close to a million dollars, on rebuilding those roads so that we could handle the traffic while we wait for Burlington Northern to rebuild the bridge and, and restore Euclid to, to serviceability to the community. That's been a bit of a challenge because for Burlington Northern, this is not one of their top priorities. So it's taken a lot of energy at both federal level and state and local levels to say, we need that bridge replaced sooner than later. And so I have had a couple of meetings with the Burlington Northern representatives, including their design team that they did hire earlier in the year. And so they are now working to finalize out the design of the replacement of the bridge realignment. Because under new standards, the grade getting up over the railroad tracks is different than what it previously was so that we can get into construction. And the last I heard was that the construction was hopefully going to be undertaken later on this year with the completion date of next year. So the county has been, as I indicated earlier, spending a lot of money to try and maintain those roads to handle the traffic volume that they, quite frankly, weren't designed to handle previously. So we're doing what we can in partnership with the neighborhoods and partnership with the Air Force, the Survival School to be able to maintain access while we wait for Burlington Northern to rebuild that bridge.
Okay. And then, yeah, I guess back to COVID CARES budget related things. I just wanted to get that one out of the way because I'd seen three questions about it. So yeah, one of the, one of the, you know, other sort of things that have gone back and forth, especially with, you know, a new set of rules coming down tomorrow, is the sort of push for reopening and, and whether or not to do that. And you had pushed in the past for, for moving to the next phase and then some different numbers came out. Where are you at now for sort of pushing to reopen? Do you still want to do that? Do you still want to, need to wait longer? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, ultimately the decision lies with the governor. And so recently he's indicated that he's suspending all counties for advancing to the next phase, regardless of what phase you're in. And this is to try and get control of the, the infection rate and to start flattening that curve out again. We were doing a great job in the spring of flattening the curve and then summer hit. And everything started to go in the wrong direction. So we are working with the Health District and, and the Governor's Office to try and get to a point where we can demonstrate that that curve is in fact flattening out and that we can move on to Phase Three. Now, there is a modified, if you will, Phase Two because some businesses have been able to, with guidance from the Health District, open up certain venues. And so we encourage the businesses to try and engage in and developing those protocols that allows not only for their employees to stay safe, but also for their customers. You know, the other challenge we're having right now too is that a lot of folks, because the numbers are increasing, don't have that confidence level that they can go out and engage in their life, go out to eat, go out and, and partake, partake in other activities without putting themselves at risk. And so it's not only about, you know, one, getting control of the virus. It's also about changing the perception about the safety of the community and stuff. So we were, we are working with our partners to be able to do that. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll see some demonstrable improvements in the infection rate. And we can start talking once again about moving on to Phase Three.
And so would you, do you want to move to Phase Three as soon as possible or?
I want to, I want to move to Phase Three as soon as it's practical. As soon as we can demonstrate that we have control of the virus, that we have control over the spread of the virus and that, you know, our hospitalizations are more than adequate to handle a flare up. You know, this is, this is a difficult transition. I mean, the, I'm not aware that the country has been in this situation before, clearly not in my lifetime. But, you know, this virus, many thought that during the summer months, the hotter weather would have an impact on the virus. Well, unfortunately, what we're seeing is just the opposite. This virus is thriving in hot weather. And so, so the assumptions about it slowing down during the summer turned out to be just false. And so now we're starting to finish up the summer, starting to go back to school. And there's a concern about a flare up again because, you know, are the kids going to be able to stay safe? Are the kids going to be able to stay healthy and not get exposed to the virus and bring it back home? Especially bringing it back home to grandma and grandpa who are part of that vulnerable class, at least identified initially and stuff. So, you know, we are learning as we go. The good news is there are now, I think, three drugs that are in Phase Three trials for vaccines. And if in fact, one of them is successful, hopefully maybe by the end of the year, we'll see a vaccine that can help address this. In the meantime, we do the best we can with the knowledge we have at the time we make decisions.
Okay. And then one, one thing that I haven't really had a chance to discuss with the county, a lot of communities in our area are also going through this. But what are some impacts to the county's budget due to COVID-19 that the public can expect to see either in the next couple of months or even in 2021 or 2022?
So our initial concern was that with retailers, with restaurants, with the tourism industry, all being effectively shut down for the year, the, this economy does really well through the tourism industry, through visitors to the region. And when that wasn't happening, the loss of retail sales tax to the county dropped. And so as that revenue, the drive services for our local taxpayers drops, then that'll have an impact on the services and our ability to continue to provide those. So initially, we were very fearful that that was going to have a dramatic impact on our ability not only finish out this year with the budget we adopted at the end of last year, but, you know, there are conversations now that this virus could be with us for at least a year or two until everybody is fully vaccinated, until we've got a handle on, on this pandemic and it's behind us. So you're exactly right with your question. How does this impact not only 2020 and our ability to finish out the year, but 2021? Does 2021 look like this year or are we going to see an improvement? And if we don't see that improvement, then that again means sales tax revenue is going to be dropping off and our ability to provide services is going to be severely hampered. So we've already started to have conversations about what do we do for 2021? What do we do to finish out 2020? We've already had a freeze on filling vacancies. So if somebody retires, that position is not filled. We're not hiring new people to provide additional services that the taxpayers have said that they wanted to see. Programs have not been undertaken because we don't know whether the revenues are going to be sustainable to be able to keep, continue to provide that service. So it has a major influence on the decisions we make and, and what our revenue expectations, expectations are to be able to sustain those programs.
Are there any specific programs you anticipate having to cut? Or like in the past, there has been layoffs across the county, including like, I think law enforcement and different things. Is that expected to occur in the next year or so?
You know, unfortunately, I wouldn't be surprised to see it occur. We're doing everything we can to prevent it. And, and so that's why we're looking for economies in other areas. If you remember back in 2008, 2009 with recession then, that led to a significant revenue drop off for the county that resulted in, I think, 32 sheriff deputies having to be laid off. That's a significant impact with the Sheriff's Department. But there were other layoffs throughout the county as well and stuff. And so we're trying to make sure that we don't get back to that situation. Our community is a larger community today than it was 10 years ago. But we're basically working with the same law enforcement department. So how do we make sure that we keep our law enforcement folks out in the street, keeping us safe? And so that is a priority for the county. But if we do go into a significant revenue drop, then everything's basically on the table. So we're doing everything we can to try and avoid that right now. And hopefully that's one of the reasons why we continue to push to get our economy open back up. Not only for the small businesses, not only get people a job. You know, I've said multiple times, I'd rather have somebody receive a paycheck than a stimulus check. But also that's revenue necessary to drive the other services that people rely on from the county. And so we're doing everything, everything we can to be able to make sure we maintain those services.
So one of the questions that I just got from a viewer slash reader is regarding the hospitality in, in tourism industry and canceled events. So I think that this person was concerned that possible that like the Public Facilities District or other sort of, you know, for example, maybe Visit Spokane or Spokane Arts or the, the Public Facilities District might not be able to pay its bills. Is there potentially help on the way maybe from the CARES Act or somewhere else from the county for them?
Well, one of the unique features with regard to the CARES funding is, and this is subject to change, but as of now, we cannot use CARES funding to cover lost revenue. So whether it's revenue that's been lost to the county or revenue that's going to be lost to the Public Facilities District or other agencies, right now, the current guidance doesn't allow us to spend those CARES dollars to replace revenue. So in the situation for the Public Facilities District that owns and operates the arena, the Performing Arts Center and another assets, you know, the fiscal agent for that agency is the county. We carry their debt. And so if they can't make that debt payment, then that comes out of the county coffers. And so yes, that is very much on the table. And a, a major concern for us is, you know, come to the end of the year, are they going to be able to make that debt payment? And if they can't, then the county will. You know, this is unfortunate for the county because, you know, just last year, at the end of last year, Standards and Poor's and Moody's upgraded the credit rating for Spokane County to AA+. That's the highest the credit rating has been for Spokane County in its history. And it's second only to the city of Seattle. So financially, we were very strong. Financially, we still are very strong. But we've got some headwinds that we've got to be able to overtake in the next six months, 12 months, to be able to maintain that strength and stuff. So, you know, we had a strong economy the first part of this year and I'm confident we'll get back to that strong economy. I just can't tell you when yet because we don't know when we're going to be able to overcome this pandemic and get our lives back to normal.
And so, for example, I, I don't believe the county is the fiscal agent for like Visit Spokane or Spokane Arts. They've lost a lot of money because of tourism and, and events. Is it possible that groups like that might be able to get some assistance with some of the losses that they've suffered?
We can't help them with the losses they've suffered because again, the guidance says we can't replace lost revenue. But we can and we are working with them to try and get their business back. So we funded a marketing campaign for the tourism industry to build that confidence, to bring tourism back to this community. We've helped, you know, through a collective effort through Greater Spokane Incorporated, the West Plains Chamber, the Valley Chamber and Downtown Spokane Partnership, the Visit Spokane. All of them came together as agencies and said, what can we do to rebuild that confidence? What can we do to restore our economy? And we did fund that through CARES funding. That is an eligible category that we can use is to provide restorative efforts to our economy. And so we did fund them, I think, to tune of about $2 to $3 million.
That was the, the marketing campaign.
Yes, that was a marketing campaign. Yeah. And then on top of that, we did the PPEs and a variety of other things.
And so I guess with a, a marketing campaign with the situation the county's in right now, with that sort of uptick in cases, is that, is that still possible? Because it might be, be that, that people might not want to or, or be able to, to travel here.
Well, the timing of the marketing campaign, I think, is the critical issue and stuff. So we need to be able to get to that point to where, you know, we're in Phase Three or, or we've got enough of our industries that are open to where we can start attracting those tourism, tourist activities back here. But, you know, again, we're, we're not just talking about today or tomorrow. We're talking about next year, the year after that. For instance, conventions that are a major part of the business for the PFD, they book out a year or two in advance and stuff. And so if you're not out there marketing for those conventions now, then they'll go somewhere else. And so we need those people to come back to Spokane and they need to come back with the confidence to be able to say, you know, yes, we'll stay here for multiple days. Yes, we'll spend our dollars here and take advantage of everything that Spokane has to offer. So, you know, the return on that effort might not be something we see tomorrow. But again, if it's something that builds 21 up, 22 up, that's a win for the community.
But that one, money would have to be spent before the end of the year though, right?
Yes. Yeah. That's one of the other unique characteristics of the CARES funding is that while it is a significant investment in the community, the feds require a variety of different thresholds we met. One is it has to be a direct relationship to the COVID virus. Two, it has to be spent before the end of the year. And it has to be spent in certain categories. So you just can't go out and say, you know what, I'd like to start a new business and I'm like a million dollars to start that business with. You know, we can't fund that because it doesn't fall into the category, the qualifications necessary for, for the feds. And, and making sure that we comply is very important because if we spend dollars that are not qualified under the CARES guidance, then the county has to reimburse the feds for those dollars we spent. So that's why we're so particular about making sure that, you know, we survive an audit, which we know is coming, and that we do everything by the letter of the law so that we make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we have to return money back to the feds.
And then another one of the, the questions I had, it's another thing that CARES funding was spent on is purchasing that homeless shelter in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood in the Housing Authority building. That was 1.7 million and then there was some funding for renovations. What's the status on, on that project?
So one of the criteria in trying to get control of the pandemic is social distancing. And so for folks that are homeless, that have a tendency to gather, congregate together, social distancing is a problem. And so how do you provide that venue? How do you make sure that you have got a safe environment for them? But also such to where you can maintain the social distancing. We were using on an emergency basis and this was being really organized through the city and their Community Development Department. We were using the arena for some of that activity. We're also using the Community Development Office Building that the county owns up on 8th Street for Women and Children's Shelter. And so those, the lease on the arena expires the middle of August. And so what do you do for that, for that segment of the community? It still needs that social distancing. And so you can continue to invest in a one-time activity like, you know, should we go out and rent hotel rooms, for that matter, and put every one of them in a hotel room? Or we can invest in a building that can accommodate that social distancing today, but then transition that building into another use that is needed in the community. And in this case, it's bridge housing. It's housing for those folks that have made a commitment to engage in activities, to get themselves financially stable and transition from being homeless into home. and transition from being homeless into a home, whether it's an apartment, a house, or some other kind of housing situation. You need that transition facility. And that's what this is ultimately envisioned to be, is that transition facility. Folks that need a help hand up and, and to get themselves financially stable. This is a transition facility for them to, to achieve that goal. So it's a short-term effort to meet social distancing. It's a long-term effort to assist folks to get out of homelessness. So we get a double bang for the buck. And so those kinds of investments, they're smart investments for communities to engage in. And we're seeing communities across the country make those kind of leveraged investments so that they'll not only treat today's problem, but also solve a problem for tomorrow as well.
And sorry, I just, this also just, you know, occurred to me back to still CARES funding, but back to the, the marketing sort of campaign that, that you mentioned. One, one email that I've sort of gotten a couple of times in response to that. Or, for example, the, the Second Harvest Food Funding is that some people are a little bit uncomfortable with this same funding that can be used to sort of provide food for this community, you know, being used for like a, a marketing project, like feeling like that those, those needs are kind of hard to sort of compete or, or compare with each other. And that, you know, funding one thing could mean that there would maybe be less food funding or less rent funding and, or, you know, people being laid off funding. And so not, not people being laid off, but, you know, helping them recover. And so I guess is sort of a, a marketing campaign, is that sort of in regards of all the other ways that this money could be spent, sort of the best for use of, of 2.5 million, I believe, is what it was?
Yeah. So the, keep in mind that, as I indicated earlier, there are a variety of different sources of money that's coming to the community, including each one of the cities inside Spokane County got their own allocation of CARES funding. And so I think it totaled up to about $11 million that the cities can use and, and are using in many cases to address the issue of rent subsidies, to address the issues of utilities and things like that. You know, the county has invested funds into rent assistance. We've also provided over $2.1 million for Second Harvest for food stability. And we have invested into, and we've been engaged in a program of utility subsidies while we get out of this. So if somebody is not in a position to where they can pay you a utility bill, you know, that, you know, we can defer that and give them some relief during this period of time. So it's a balancing act, as I indicated. Cities can invest in some of those programs that are more unique to their city. And the county is investing into programs that are countywide, that cross jurisdictional lines, like the Health District is a great example. You know, none of the cities are contributing to the Health District. The only ones that are is the county. But yet, everybody benefits from the Health District. And so that's critical. The investing in the business community. We're not investing into just businesses in the county, unincorporated area. We're investing into businesses that are in all the cities and the incorporated area. So that is countywide. It, it, it doesn't, it's not limited by the jurisdictional boundaries of each city.
Okay. And so this is, unless we have another reader question in the next five minutes, this is probably my last one. And then I'll maybe, you know, give you another opportunity if you want to, you know, share anything with the public or have anything you want to update. But, um, you know, you, the county commissioners are going to go on a, a break for, for the rest of this week and then in the next week. And then one of the things that they've discussed recently is that task force, the, their ideas that they've put forward, including the, the racial equity. Is that something that you, that the commissioners will take up when they return in the beginning of August? Or maybe push off for longer? And are you sort of leaning and what sort of guiding principles are you currently leaning towards?
So I think we're, we've come to an agreement on all the guiding principles except for the last one. And we are having a very good debate about whether the term in that last guiding principle should be equity or equality. And so there's some good discussion and some good education going on around that. So let me just say before I start into this conversation, I've been a proponent for trying to achieve advancements in dealing with the systemic racial inequality in this community. And been engaged in those conversations for several years now. Is it present? Yes, it is. And if, if you don't believe it is, then you got to pull your head out of the sand. And so, you know, how do we address that? How do we make the systems that affect our lives better? And that's one of the reasons why with the reform efforts with criminal justice system, my, my stated goal publicly is equal justice quicker. How do we make sure that everybody is in the, that is encountering the criminal justice system is treated equally, is treated fairly, is, is is not discriminated against because of their race, their gender, their life choice. And so we've made some pretty significant advancements in, in that area. Are we done? Absolutely not. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. But quite frankly, the issue with regard to race goes beyond the criminal justice system. The issue of race is a community conversation that happens or must happen at, at the school levels, at the employment levels, at the bank levels, at every part of this community. We need to be very aggressively saying, what can we do to eliminate racism out of this community? It's a hefty goal. But if we don't deliberately engage in those conversations, we'll never achieve it. You know, I was, I was alive and, and here when the, the riots of the 60s were taking place. And, and then again, 70s. And, you know, generationally, we get a little bit better. But we are not where we need to be. And, and so we need to continue to work to make sure that we're providing equal opportunity, equal justice for everybody in this community. That's a goal. That's my goal. Now, the challenge is, what is, what does equity mean? And, and that's a new term in the conversation. And for some people, it means one thing. For others, it means something else. But because there is diversity of opinion about what it means, it also means that there is not a universal understanding about what, when will you know that you've achieved it? And so that's part of the conversation. And so we'll do a lot of work on that, you know? Maybe, and I was thinking about this and, and had a conversation with another individual in the community here just earlier this week about maybe trying to combine all of that into one principle is, is, is where we're getting hung up on. Maybe we need to provide an additional guiding principle that addresses specifically racial equity or racial equality and stuff. So, so it is a discussion, it's a debate. I think we're going to continue to debate this until we get to a point to where we think that that reflects a principle, a goal that we can all understand and we can all work aggressively to achieve. So that's, and I do feel that we'll be taking this topic up again when we come back from break and, and we'll continue to wrestle with it until we find an answer.
And so when, when you get back from break, will some of the people from the, the task force or especially, you know, people in the task force who are people of color, will they be possibly invited into that conversation to sort of maybe define equity for the commissioners? Or offer a little input on why they wanted that word?
You know, I, I don't want to presuppose what the board is going to do. That clearly will be one of the topics on the table. You know, all three commissioners attended the task force meetings. And so we understand, I think, that, that part of the argument. We also understand that there's another part of it as well. It's not to deny that there needs to be more work done from a racial equality standpoint. And, and the other thing is that a lot of those decisions are made by, guess what? Not the commissioners, they're made by the judges, made by the prosecutor, made by the public defender. They're made by the courts. And it's interesting because part of this conversation with regard to racial equity and the term equity is really born out of restorative justice, an initiative that was started several years ago. And the legislature, when it debated this issue, did provide by state statute opportunities for restorative justice as it relates to juveniles. But when it came to taking that same approach and applying it to adults, they didn't and stuff. So again, you know, the county doesn't make the laws as it relates to criminal activity, that's made by the state legislature. And so it's interesting to me that even the state legislature did not adopt the restorative justice approach, which is part of that equity conversation when it dealt with this thing a couple of years ago. So it is a debate. I think everybody understands, well, well, let me, that maybe that's an overreach. I know what the goal is. I just want to make sure that the language accurately reflects that goal and is achievable.
So equity might not be achievable? Or, sorry, I just, I, I, I just, the, the is achievable word is just a little hiccup. This is my last question. I just wanted to, like, what, what does is achievable mean?
Well, I think everybody wants to achieve equality. Everybody wants to be treated the same. Everybody wants to be able to know that, you know, when I go out in public, just because I'm African American, I'm not going to be pulled over by a police officer. I'm not going to be enduring a longer sentence in jail because I happen to be African American or because I happen to be gay or, or, you know, some other life tricks. So everybody wants to be treated the same as, as an individual. And, and I think, you know, that's what's guaranteed in the Constitution. And I think that as an elected official is my mandate to uphold the US Constitution, the Washington State Constitution. That's what's clearly defined as the goal. And so that's what we're going to work to achieve.
Well, I have used up all of my time and, but do you have anything that you want to share or, or add that, just to, just to close this out?
Well, just to, to you and to the spokesman, thank you for the opportunity to, to share some thoughts with the public and stuff. It is a challenging time. And we don't get to interact personally with each other like we used to. But I'm optimistic that that day will come and it'll be part of our lifestyle again. In the meantime, I'm just asking folks, be patient, be safe, wear the mask, help us flatten this curve, help us get our lives back so that we can start re-engaging in all of the things that makes Spokane a wonderful place to live.
All right. Well, that is kind of all the time we have. And thank you so much for everyone who tuned in and watched. So I'm Rebecca White, reporter with the Spokesman Review. This is Al French. And everyone, thank you for watching. And we are out.